And we'd like to thank everybody for tuning in to BTW 21. I'm the host Chad Hall and you'll be watching our election coverage tonight. Hope you all got out, I guess I should use this way, hope you all got out and voted. We went out early this morning. My son and I, we went in the BlackBerry District and we voted and I'm sure a lot of you, you've been seeing these about all day. So, and we're going to be covering some of the election, mostly the city council as we get started. And again, the polls are just now shutting down at seven o'clock, a little after. And as we get started, we've had the opportunity to host and be a part of, if I'm not mistaken, three debates or more or less forums throughout this candidate election for the city council. We partnered up with Cardinal News and was able to do a couple and we also hosted one in-house here at BTW 21. As well as the Chamber Legislative always has a great debate as well, or forum, again, with all their sponsors. Field Gardener also helping with that, with AEP and many others. And tonight, we want to thank our sponsors as well. Want to thank Autos by Nelson for helping us do our live coverage tonight. And as well, we want to thank Martinsville Eye Care Center. And we can't forget about We Need Tires. We go to Cunningham Tire. Cunningham Tire is going to be one of our sponsors tonight. And also Sarver Properties, whether you want to buy, sell your property, you need to go see Sarver Property. Now, we've got the template that we're going to put on the screen now to kind of let you see what folks at home you'll be seeing as the numbers do begin to come in. We've got a great lineup set up for you. Hopefully, we can get these numbers in relatively quickly tonight. And I want to thank our technician slash graphic designer, Mr. Wayne Harold, who is helping us tonight and has been a great part of making this night successful, along with Ms. Grace Webster as well, who's producing with me here in the back. And we're just going to, hopefully, these numbers will begin to come in a little quickly. We'll check on the Virginia side occasionally to just begin to see what the numbers are beginning to look like. If we have some slow times with the numbers, but right now, we have no numbers, no polling has been coming in at this time. But as we get started, we did have the opportunity today to interview all of the candidates. So what I would like to do as we get started, again, I hope everybody went out and voted. I was looking at some numbers and I'm going to see if I can roust those up where the election was. A lot of voters came out last year, 2022, the voter turnout was a little bit lower. We're hoping to see that number a little higher for 2024. 2020 or 2023 was a little bit lower than 2022 in some of the elections. So we want to, we hope everybody went out and voted. You know, I've talked to a lot of people that, oh, it doesn't matter. I don't have time, but it is a great right as an American citizen, you can come out and vote and at least voice your opinion by your vote. And thank you all for coming out if you voted and we've seen a large turnout in the early voting. That was, I think, one of the biggest successes. And also, we've seen even with the city today, they were helping folks as they could drive through if they were unable to even get out of the car. They were helping them get their votes in and out. So some of the elderly didn't have to get out or even handicap accessible. They didn't have to worry about trying to do, park their car and get all the way to the voting polls. So a lot of workers has been busy, busy, busy today. And now it's kind of going to be crunch time as everybody begins to get some of these numbers in. And what we'll do now, we'll go and we'll go to our first interview. And Mr. Gravely, we finally chased Mr. Gravely down and caught him at the middle school. And Mr. Gravely, he's run a great campaign. He's also right been right in the middle of, you know, 40 hours a week, working all the time. And he's held a good campaign. I do, I want to commend all five of these for running a clean campaign. They all came together and they made the statement, hey, let's make this thing clean. Let's don't be bashing one another. And I literally was kind of shocked at BTW, we did have a forum. And we did have a couple of hot shot questions that shot across the bow. And not a whole lot of back and forth because everybody kind of stuck to what they had committed. So the only thing that I realized through the debates and some of the things that I have personally seen the last four or five months as we've been working on debates and forums is a lot of folks talking about the county being upset with the city of Martinsville over the reversion. And that was just one time that there was a little bit of confrontation, not really at all. We've seen Ms. Herlum had made a suggestion that she did not agree with Ms. Kathy Lawson, that a lot of the residents of the county was still a little upset. That being said, my opinion, what I have seen and heard is there are some residents of Henry County that are a little upset. But then going back to Ms. Lawson, her working relationship with the advisors and other people and the board of supervisors is all well. So it's a little unknown, I guess would be the right word. It's a little bit unknown right now. But I'm guessing the election is nothing to do with reversion. The city of Martinsville is looking to move forward, move on and be successful and hey, be that city with no limits. So let's go now to that video with Ray Sean Gravely and kind of his journey for the last four or five months and even into the day as now he's waiting to see if he's going to be one of the three, one that fills the three seats.
Of course Chad, I'm excited. It's been a good day, good weather, not too cold, not too hot. It feels like baseball right now. All bases are loaded. I got my volunteers at each precinct. We're shaking hands. We're smiling. We're staying positive and we're just hoping for a great outcome. You know, it's going to be a long day, but I'm up for it. It's been a long few months. But here we are. I'm looking to be successful in the end, hopefully. If the citizens vote me in, it's up to the citizens, but most of all, I've learned a lot. I've gained a lot of knowledge. I've gained a lot of strength, a lot of connections. And most of all, you know, I've been able to help someone along the way, even as a candidate running. And that's what this is all about at the end of this, to help someone else along the way, continue to grow Martinsville and continue to grow this community. Well, you know, it's been challenging because like I said, I still work most Monday through Fridays, a 40-hour shift. And with mental health, that with itself is challenging. So I've just had to, you know, adjust my lifestyle, adjust my eating, adjust, you know, extra activities to fit this lifestyle that I want to potentially have to, for the betterment of this community. But it's been a struggle because you know, sometimes I have to take off work, I have to get off early. And some weeks, the checks are short, something, so you know, but we make things work and we make it happen. And most importantly, we're determined to finish to the end.
And thanks again. Again, I had a little technical difficulty there with some black on the screen behind that interview, but that's perfectly fine. We'll get that cleaned back up. But you know, we want to say this, we will follow the presidential election to some degree. And I tell you why we won't stay here the entire night, because the last presidential election was about an eight to nine-week journey to ever really figure out who was the president. So we're going to follow the city council race and we do have a website here, Virginia Department of Elections, where you can go and you can follow the presidential election per the city and per the county or per Virginia. And I'm going to follow that a little bit tonight on the presidential election side for Virginia and even Henry County. But again, there's absolutely no numbers has come in for any of that at this time. So again, going back to some of the forums, we've seen a little bit of everybody's taste of what they want to do or some ideas of what they want to do. I think everybody in the city council is 100% for creating something in the city that would allow people to hang out around the city, to walk to different things. And again, biggest thing that I'm seeing that would bother me if I was in the city, and we are, BTW is in the city, the church is in the city and other things as well, as we own is some is in the city. You know, the infrastructure of getting the water, the sewer, some of those things can no longer completely be overlooked and they're going to have to be looked at really soon in the near future. So again, we're going to be following this election as close as we can. And again, we will put on the screen again, the template of what we'll be showing you throughout the evening until we get all of the numbers in for city council. You can see you will have Ray Sean there and then Lenita and Julian and Kathy and John. Again, best of luck to all five of you as we get started in our election coverage. What we want to do now, we're going to take a quick commercial break. We want to thank some of our sponsors and we'll come back and let's see if we got any numbers trickling in. Stay tuned. We'll be right back.
Nelson Towing and Recovery has been serving Martinsville, Henry County and the surrounding areas for 45 years. We have a talented, friendly staff with almost 100 years of combined experience. All of our drivers are certified and experienced in just about any situation. Our fleet of tow trucks contains a variety of modern vehicles that will meet every possible need. We also provide roadside assistance to help you out in case you have a flat tire or run out of fuel. Nelson Towing and Recovery, 888-257-8866.
Martinsville Eye Care Center, we've always believed in the power of community. For years, we've proudly supported local organizations like Boys and Girls Club, United Way, YMCA, Smart Beginnings and the American Red Cross and many others. Our community goes beyond just eye care. It's about caring for our community. Martinsville Eye Care Center, 1099 Brookdale Street, Martinsville, Virginia.
If you're looking to buy or sell, please give us a call at 276-647-7667 or come by our office at Sarver Properties, 5006 Kings Mountain Road, Collinsville, Virginia. We bought the building back last year and we've been remodeling since and we are ready to go now. We've just worked relentlessly with local contractors and my staff and got it done. We set it up as an open concept so all the agents can come in. They have their own dual monitor systems with the use on their laptops and that way we're all working together in the same room. Right now, we have eight agents and we're always looking to hire new agents as well. We have listings now when we're ready to go and we can show any house in the MLS system.
It's that time again. Mark your calendar for the 32nd Annual Big Bird Toy Run. Going to be November the 9th, registration from 10 to 12:30, kickstands up at 1:00. 20 are rider, 25 for doubles. Our starting point this year, thanks to our new sponsor, is Thunder Road Harley-Davidson. 32nd Annual Big Bird Toy Run in memory of Rick Big Bird Hogan. And we're still awaiting some of the election numbers to be coming in. Again, the polls are being closed out. Now, if you're just tuning in, I'm Chad Hall. You're watching BTW 21, our election coverage. Again, we're going to be following the Martinsville City 2024 election. Again, we have five individuals that are running for three seats. Hopefully, you've been able to tune in and see some of the forums, the live debates. And talking to them, of course, again, Ms. Kathy Lawson is running for a reseat. She is already in city council and she is running for reelection. So a lot of folks know Ms. Kathy Lawson. I mean, I know Ms. Kathy well, been working with her with Christmas cheer and everything else for over 30 years with some of the things we are partnering in and work with. Julian, I know he's been selling houses for a long time. I've known his mother and some of his family for over 20 years. But then we had three that did come in, like John Wilson, never knew that he was a resident at one point in time of Henry County and back to Martinsville rather, or in the city. But you know, then we had the young guy, you know, I don't think Ray Sean Gravely, I think he's 24, 25 years old. Again, all of them had a heart for the city. I think they all had great intentions and they want to see some things move forward. Again, one of the things that I attempted to do with our forum and debate was regardless of who's sitting on city council, if we don't have any unity and can't agree to disagree to move forward, we're kind of in a locked, landlocked. You've heard them use that word with the city. The city's landlocked. It's not going to get any bigger. The only thing they can do is build infrastructure, build it up. And when you're landlocked, so to speak, you're going to find yourself in trouble eventually. And when you have five city councilmen or ladies and no one can get along, it's going to be very difficult to move forward. So I believe that's going to be the key is getting the people in there that can have unity and understand. Maybe they don't always agree, but we still got to come up with a solution. That's what city council is all about, finding the solution to the citizens' problems. One of the problems the citizens are having, they believe they're paying way too much tax. I personally, I think the taxes here, we're very blessed. I've seen some taxes in other areas that are much higher than ours. But the only way to continue to survive in the city is raise taxes, change things like your property taxes, sales taxes and things of that nature, which brings in more revenue. And right now, the revenue is totally being held on by the citizens. So that is some things that city council has some big tasks to fill. You look at, again, affordable housing, not only just in the city, but worldwide right now. Everybody is dealing with affordable housing. We're a part of several different forums with Cardinal News that were in other communities. Every community is saying the same thing, affordable housing. We need affordable housing. You know, a two-bedroom apartment at $1,200 is not affordable housing. And those are what, those are things that we're seeing, we're seeing rents higher than they've ever been before. We've seen houses sell for a number that we've never even dreamed of selling before. Matter of fact, me personally, I've even thought about selling out because the prices are so high. And again, that's very difficult for newlyweds or people moving in or college students to try to successfully make it when, one, there is no housing and you've got industries that are coming in that are employing maybe 500, maybe even 1,000. Where do we put those people? And that's another big one that I've got to say, I liked Julian's stance on this, but really, everybody had the exact same opinion. But the way he brought it out was, you know, if you want to work in our city, you need to live in it. And I do, I do agree with that 100%. You know, get some skin in the game. But how do you get skin in the game if you don't have housing? So again, that is another very big issue for the city of Martinsville is housing, affordable housing. And it's not just in the city. Again, it's in Virginia, it's statewide and it is a very big problem. So, but I do believe that when people are committed to where they live, the bottom line, where we live, work and play was a jingle years ago for the city. And when you live, work and play here, you're invested. You're kind of all in, you're sold out to being here in the city. So that is to me a big plus and that's why you got to live in the city to run for city council. And that being said, we're going to take a look now at another interview that we had. We were able to catch Lenita Herlum. She was also at the middle school. I got lucky and caught two of them at the high school, excuse me, the middle school today. And she was very excited that, one, it's almost over. It's been very tiring. And she was, again, she gives God the glory. She said, if I'm elected, I'm going to do my best. And if not, God's got another plan for me. But she said, I got my fingers crossed. I believe I'm going to get elected. So let's go to that video.
I am very happy it's election day. I'm counting down the hours because I'm exhausted. Just going and knocking on doors every day and doing all the events and all. It's fun, but it's, after a while, it gets really tired. I'm probably knocking on the doors and meeting people and a lot of, a lot of them, yeah, they're working during the day and all, so I don't get to talk to them. But when somebody answers the door and they have questions and all, I've stood there for an hour talking to people. So that's probably the best part because actually getting that one-on-one with somebody who, you know, has a different point of view outside of the city government. I'm around a lot of the council people and all that stuff with the council meetings and everything, but to actually go out and talk to the people who live here and getting their point of view, that was, that was the best part.
Again, that is Ms. Herlum's reaction. Again, a long journey, something very fresh, very new for her. You know, you've heard her story, military background, her husband, again, losing his life, serving the country. And then she was back home, taking care of family and she was asked, why don't you run for city council? She loves history and she kind of proved that. She definitely is, loves digging and finding out information. And again, she's, you can tell, all of the city councilmen that we spoke to today, they're tired. It's been a long journey. It's been a hard road and everybody has been putting in a lot of extra hours, knocking on doors and trying to get that one more vote or get that one more possibility of that vote. So again, hats off to all of them for working really hard. But we're going to take a quick commercial break, thank some of our sponsors and hopefully soon, some of these numbers will start rolling in. Stay tuned. We'll be right back.
If you're looking to buy or sell, please give us a call at 276-647-7667 or come by our office at Sarver Properties, 5006 Kings Mountain Road, Collinsville, Virginia. We bought the building back last year and we've been remodeling since and we are ready to go now. We've just worked relentlessly with local contractors and my staff and got it done. We set it up as an open concept so all the agents can come in. They have their own dual monitor systems with the use on their laptops and that way we're all working together in the same room. Right now, we have eight agents and we're always looking to hire new agents as well. We have listings now when we're ready to go and we can show any house in the MLS system.
Guys, right here is the 2017
Folks, again, we hate to break in on our commercial break, but we just began to get some numbers in and we wanted you to be the first to see these numbers as one of the polls has closed and they have added up the polls numbers. Hopefully, I hope I can figure out what polling this is and maybe my producer can get with our gentleman helping us out what poll that was that just shut down. But if you'll look here, it looks like Ray Sean Gravely has taken the lead right out of the gate here with 357. And then that's going to go to Ms. Kathy Lawson with 279. And then we'll see John Wilson III with 206 and then Julian May with, May, excuse me, 133 and Ms. Lenita Herlum, 117. So those numbers just came in. And again, we're going to try to get some information on what's precinct that was. And as soon as we can get that information, we will let you know. Precinct number five is coming up. That was precinct number one that just came in, precinct number one. So precinct number five is coming up. Let's take another quick break and thank those sponsors and we'll be right back.
Guys, this is the 2024 Mach E GT and I'm going to show you lots better than a Tesla. To start off guys, we have the super aggressive hood, these beautiful LED lights. My favorite part about it is the light up on it. We have active aero right here. We have active vents right here to cool off your brakes. When we come around to the side, we have these beautiful 20-inch wheels wrapped in Continental. The right behind it are these gigantic Brembo brakes and it has Magneride. To get in, all you have to do is press this button or you can leave everything inside and use this touchscreen or you can use the app on your phone. Guys, inside, we have a huge display monitor that supports Apple CarPlay and Android Auto. Move down, we have storage space right here. It is a wireless car charger right here. We have storage right here, right here. And then you have your 15-inch display and monitor right here. You have a giant speaker that goes from dash to dash all the way across. You get almost 300 miles on a full charge and with 360 horsepower, it saves pretty quick. With all of that, guys, that is the Ford Mach E GT. Let us know down in the comments if you will buy one of these things. And if you do, you can always swing by Nelson Automotive Ford dealership and pick you up one of these things today. Guys, let us know what cars you want to see next.
Martinsville Eye Care Center, we've always believed in the power of community. For years, we've proudly supported local organizations like Boys and Girls Club, United Way, YMCA, Smart Beginnings and the American Red Cross and many others. Our community goes beyond just eye care. It's about caring for our community. Martinsville Eye Care Center, 1099 Brookdale Street, Martinsville, Virginia.
If you're looking to buy or sell, please give us a call at 276-647-7667 or come by our office at Sarver Properties, 5006 Kings Mountain Road, Collinsville, Virginia. We bought the building back last year and we've been remodeling since and we are ready to go now. We've just worked relentlessly with local contractors and my staff and got it done. We set it up as an open concept so all the agents can come in. They have their own dual monitor systems with the use on their laptops and that way we're all working together in the same room. Right now, we have eight agents and we're always looking to hire new agents as well. We have listings now when we're ready to go and we can show any house in the MLS system.
It's that time again. Mark your calendar for the 32nd Annual Big Bird Toy Run. Going to be November the 9th, registration from 10 to 12:30, kickstands up at 1:00. 20 are rider, 25 for doubles. Our starting point this year, thanks to our new sponsor, is Thunder Road Harley-Davidson. 32nd Annual Big Bird Toy Run in memory of Rick Big Bird Hogan. Thanks for staying with us. Precinct number five, the numbers just came in and boy, we've seen a large jump for Ms. Kathy Lawson. Ms. Kathy Lawson is now taking the lead with 672 and Julian May as well took a big jump there, 631. Ray Sean Gravely is still looking at the third spot there at 542. 512, John Wilson behind him there, not very far behind and Ms. Herlum at 354. Again, that's precinct one and precinct two that has just came in. Again, you can see those numbers there on your screen. Again, big shout out to Autos by Nelson, Martinsville Eye Care Center, Cunningham Tire and Sarver Properties because this entire broadcast is presented by those sponsors. So thank you guys as well. Oh, big shout out to Voice in Holland Veterinary Service who fed us tonight as well, pizza and wings. Thank you guys. Appreciate that. So precincts one and precincts five are in. And again, I felt like Ms. Lawson would have a really good chance of being voted back in. Kathy has been on the council for quite a season and she has had some really good results as a city council member. A lot of the new, I guess we'd call it historic apartments that are kind of being Uh, a lot of the new, um, I guess we'd call it historic apartments, uh, that are kind of being done by John and those guys, um, that are working. We actually just went to Fieldale, uh, this week. They're again raising funds, uh, to get the pools finished, uh, before next year. So again, the community, Fieldale Center will be open with all the pools active. And, uh, these guys have, are renovating a lot of the old historic places, making apartments and they're filling up. And those are things that has happened, uh, while Ms. Lawson, uh, has been on city council. Uh, so again, going back to, um, how is the relationship with the county and the city? Again, I feel like that is unknown. We're kind of in the unknown. We haven't really, uh, went to the county and attempted to interview anyone to say, hey, are you mad at the city? Go back to the city. Hey, are you mad at the county? Uh, we haven't really seen any of that. And I really believe, uh, that we're going to be able to really move forward, uh, in the future. And I love the fact, um, that hopefully we can get three folks on the board, uh, on the city council and we can bring unity and get some things accomplished, uh, in the next couple of years. Again, the city is looking at some major infrastructure issues. We're seeing a whole lot of housing, uh, uh, issues and these things have got to be, uh, dealt with. Uh, I want to take a quick look if I can, if my computer will let me, and I will go, uh, into the Henry County. I don't know if my producer will be able to do this. I'm in the, uh, Henry County candidates. It looks like, uh, Donald Trump is sixty-two point eight-five percent right now. I want to make sure I'm in the right county before I say that again. I'm pretty sure I am in the, uh, in the county. And it looks like, uh, the Republican Party is, uh, doing well now, uh, in the county. We see, I hope I say his name right. Hungo. Am I saying that right? Hungo, um, is running against Tim Kaine. Uh, he's at fifty-eight point thirteen percent. And of course Morgan Griffin, uh, sixty-three point seven eight percent. Again, now this is just, uh, in our county, uh, nowhere else. This is just in our county. Um, and those are some numbers we'll try to keep up with a little bit, uh, as we move through tonight. Uh, but again, uh, the information that we'll try to keep on your screen is going to be with the city council. So far in the city of Martinsville, none of the tallies has come up for the presidential side of the election. So we'll go back again. You see Ms. Lawson, uh, and Julian, right now are two sitting in pretty good shoes, um, with precinct one and precinct five, uh, already coming in. So you see, um, John and Ray Sean, they're really still, that's really still close. And Lanita, she's going to need some serious votes coming in on the next couple of precincts to kind of get back in this race. Uh, but again, with Kathy and, uh, Julian, we're seeing a little bit of a jump there, uh, in, uh, the numbers. So while we're waiting, uh, well, update, we got precinct three is in. Precinct three is in and it looks like Ms. Kathy Lawson takes another jump, uh, in her lead to eight fifty-six. Julian May takes seven sixty-five and it looks like now Ray Sean Gravely has come on up the ladder there with seven sixty-two. So again, we're, we're beginning to see like we always do, we begin to kind of see the trend in the numbers. Uh, so again, uh, John Wilson is six thirteen and, uh, we're seeing here precinct three. No, that was precinct three that we just brought in. Uh, so again, we saw a big jump there, uh, for Ms. Kathy, uh, Lawson. So precinct one. I take that back. Precinct one was closed. You are just seeing five and three. My apologies. So precinct one numbers are on the way. Will be about three minutes. So what we'll do, we'll take a quick commercial break and we'll come back with some fresh numbers. Stay tuned. We'll be right back.
Get ready for big savings at Cunningham Tire. Now through December eighth, save up to $60 on Michelin tires. Plus, buy a set of four Cooper tires and get up to $100 back by mail-in or online rebate. Or choose N-Coup tires and enjoy up to a $120 rebate on select sets. Visit Cunningham Tire at 2020 Fairstone Park Highway in Bassett, Virginia, or stop by our Danville location at 4,783 Riverside Drive. Michelin, Leito, N-Coup, N Word, all at Cunningham Tire.
Nelson Towing and Recovery has been serving Martinsville, Henry County and the surrounding areas for 45 years. We have a talented, friendly staff with almost 100 years of combined experience. All of our drivers are certified and experienced in just about any situation. Our fleet of tow trucks contains a variety of modern vehicles that will meet every possible need. We also provide roadside assistance to help you out in case you have a flat tire or run out of fuel. Nelson Towing and Recovery, eight 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 two five seven eighty-eight sixty-six.
It's that time again. Mark your calendar for the 32nd Annual Big Bird Toy Run. It's going to be November the ninth, registration from 10 to 12:30, kickstands up at one. Twenty a rider, twenty-five for doubles. Our starting point this year, thanks to our new sponsor, is Thunder Road Harley-Davidson. 32nd Annual Big Bird Toy Run in memory of Rick Big Bird Hogan. And again, some of the precincts are, uh, the numbers are coming in. Um, we got precinct one, which I misread, uh, my communications. Uh, will be coming in in just a matter of seconds as we get ready to tally up, uh, precinct one. But going back to where we stand at this current time is Ms. Kathy Lawson, uh, eight hundred and fifty-six. Uh, Julian May with seven hundred and sixty-five and then we see, uh, Ray Sean Gravely at seven sixty-two. Again, uh, those three, uh, are looking really good right now for the three seats, but there's still a long way to go uh, in some of these precincts as they begin, uh, to come in. But what I would like to do now, as we're still waiting on some of these numbers, we also had the opportunity today to speak to Mr. Julian May, uh, about again, his journey, uh, and what it's been like for him. And, uh, you know, again, everybody's were out and, but everybody's polling. Everybody's, hey, I appreciate you voting. Everybody's handing out stuff. Uh, and I think everybody's going to be really excited, uh, tonight when it's over. Especially, uh, when they can, if they're elected, they're going to be mighty excited. But before we go to that interview, we just got another precinct in and it looks like Ms. Kathy Lawson again, has took another big jump to a thousand voters. Ray Sean Gravely has now taken over second place with nine hundred and eighty-nine. With eight hundred and nine is Julian May. So we've seen, uh, Gravely, uh, take over the second seat there, so to speak. But it's still okay. Three seats, uh, available. Uh, again, we're beginning to see, uh, the three candidates that it looks like are, they're beginning to look at, but it's still time and they can still get right back in it with one precinct. Uh, but history and the way a lot of these things begin to trend, it kind of shows itself, uh, going in this direction. But I was talking about, we, we had talked to Julian, uh, today. I want to go to that quick little video with Julian and hopefully we'll have some updated numbers right after this quick interview with Julian.
Uh, relieved and very thankful and grateful for everyone's participation because it's their most sacred right as an American citizen. In many other countries, you don't have a say-so whatsoever and the issues that directly affect you. So, uh, it's one of, if not the most important things that American citizen can do. What would it mean to me if I had a city council seat? It would mean that I'd have an opportunity to, um, fully and directly impact the direction that Martinsville is heading and that I would be able to help steward it in what I believe would be a positive, even more positive direction than it's already heading.
And again, uh, you can just see, you know, with the interview, tired, ready to move forward, ready to get the job done. Uh, again, Julian, uh, thank you for running and, and again, I gotta say, um, I, I agree with some of the things that you made about if you want to work in this city and you need to live in this city, put some skin in the game. I like that. I think that means that you're, um, you'll help the city grow because you're embedded in the city, uh, and you're concerned. Usually where you live and lay your head, you want it to prosper. So again, we're going to check now and see if we got any more new numbers. We did, unfortunately, we're still waiting on, um, hearing we have six precincts. And I think we have done half of them, if I'm not mistaken. We have done half of them. So if you're looking at the numbers where they are right now, if it was over, it would be Ms. Kathy Lawson. It would be Mr. Ray Sean Gravely and Mr. Julian May if the, if it was at the end of the day. Uh, we got three more precincts coming in and we'll see how these numbers trend. Uh, and I want to go back and look at what the, if I can see where I was with the election, um, I may not, here we go. Uh, again, let me refresh this page. Again, this is just Henry County in a whole. Uh, again, we're looking at Trump sixty-five point twenty. Again, this is just Henry County as a whole, not Virginia. Uh, actually it looks like we've had, um, a write-in. It looks like Tim Kaine is trailing, uh, again, uh, young, uh, sixty point twenty-eight percent. So that's kind of where we are right now. Um, and that's just in the county. Uh, let's go back and make sure our numbers for, uh, haven't changed and they have, new numbers are in. It looks like this is updated for precinct number four. Again, seeing a major trend here with Ms. Kathy Lawson, twelve hundred and fifty-nine voters and a big jump for Ray Sean Gravely, putting him at twelve hundred and sixteen and Julian May at a thousand and sixty-nine. Um, again, you look at John, eight sixteen, still two hundred and some odd votes behind third place. Going to be very difficult to probably reel that in unless he basically takes over a precinct. And who knows, his precinct may be coming. He may be his home territory, uh, in his home turf. Maybe the precinct that they're adding up even now. And that can go the exact same way, uh, for Ms. Hurlem as well. Uh, so again, we're seeing, uh, these numbers as they come in. Hopefully, uh, everybody got out and voted, uh, and had a, uh, it was a beautiful day. Uh, we all, uh, here at the station, uh, we got out and actually I got our little sticker here that we voted. And, uh, we're glad that we were able to vote. Unfortunately, I did not get to vote for the city council because I do not live in the city. Um, but I live in the county. So I did get to vote for the presidential and the vice president and some of those, uh, parties that are running. So again, it looks like, again, the trend shifted from two to three. I was, I'm really, I, I, I seen the trend moving with Kathy and also with Julian, but now Ray Sean had a strong precinct number four. And now we've got precinct number six is coming up in about three minutes. So what we'll do, we want to take a quick look at what Kathy Lawson said today, uh, when we called her and, uh, again, running for reelection. This is what Kathy had to say.
A breath of fresh air. Uh, it's been, um, an election that I have never, uh, experienced before. So I am grateful for the support and, um, all the, the well wishes and public comment. And, um, people saying that they appreciate the service that I have given and they're voting for me. So, uh, it's, uh, today is here and, um, you know, it, it's a good day. Yeah. Uh, people should vote because, um, we, we are very blessed to live in a country where we have the right to express our opinion uh, and to cast our vote. So many countries don't have that opportunity. And, uh, to me, it's just your, it's, it's your responsibility, uh, to, to come and express your opinion, uh, through casting your ballot. Uh, you know, my, my one and only goal ever, uh, in serving council is serving the people. So it's, it's providing service to our citizens that sometimes don't have a voice. Uh, it's being able to resolve issues that sometimes go unnoticed. Uh, but it's about serving the community, serving the people and just, you know, continue to make this city a great place to live.
And again, thanks for staying with us. A big shout out to all of our sponsors. And again, we were taking another quick look at the Virginia, uh, ballot, uh, here for Henry County. And again, it looks like Trump, uh, has, uh, taken the lead, uh, with sixty-five point, uh, two-nine. Uh, looks like the Republican Party at, at this point, um, has taken, uh, the lead at sixty point three. Uh, when we look at the United States Senate, again, that's, uh, young over, uh, Kane. And then when we look at the House of Representatives, uh, the ninth district, again, Morgan Griffin, sixty-seven point two-one, which Morgan Griffin has been, uh, in office for a long time. Uh, let's go back to our numbers and let's see if we got any fresher numbers in and we have. And it looks like Ray Sean Gravely has now taken the number one seat. Thirteen forty-five to Ms. Lawson's twelve fifty-nine. Again, Julian May in third there for ten ninety-eight. And, uh, we've seen a little jump there with, uh, Lanita. Uh, John is still with eight thirty-seven, Lanita with seven nineteen. So again, that's back to what I was saying, precinct number six could have been exactly where he lived and could have been the numbers, uh, that he was looking for. Uh, now we're waiting on the absentees and the early voters. Now, how significant could this be in this particular election? Uh, looking at what we're seeing here, uh, that is basically where we'll find out the winners, but I think we're already seeing the trend. I feel like at this point, I'm not a professional at the debates, but I would be willing to probably say we're looking at Ray Sean, Julian and Kathy taking seats in city council. Now I do know the early voters, there was a ton of early voters. So that could drastically change, uh, the, uh, the votes. It, it, it all depends on how many came out. I know we're a little off last year with voter turnout. So hopefully this year we've had a larger turnout. So what I want to do, we'll take a quick little, uh, snippet here. We was able to find John at the, at the high school and we interviewed John and this is what John had to say about his election journey.
I feel great. It's been a great turnout. I mean, I've been here since three minutes after six and it's been just a steady stream of folks coming in and, and everybody is eager to get out and vote and I'm, I'm really glad. I've seen a lot of folks whose doors unlocked on and it's, it's, it's been great. I really, I mean, it's been a, a great day so far and I want it to keep going. Can't wait till seven o'clock, but, but I mean, it's going great. Really, it's going great. It, they need to exercise the right to vote. We've all, as a veteran, I fought for that, for people to come out here and vote. They need to exercise that right and, and it, it does mean something. So come out here and vote, make your vote count. Voice your opinion or how you want to say it, exercise your opinion and, and put it to good use. Oh, I'll dance a jig. Um, it, it, it would really mean a lot because, uh, I want to do everything I can to help Martinsville. I want us to stay focused. I want us to keep going forward and I really do believe we are going forward. There are better days ahead for Martinsville and I want to be a part of them.
And we're back. And again, looking at these numbers, we're kind of talking, uh, while we were, uh, letting you see, uh, the, uh, uh, not commercial, but the video there with John, uh, we were talking about, look at how the numbers changed with Ray Sean Gravely. Uh, he came out of the gate, uh, really strong and then he like tapered way off and then all of a sudden the votes began to come in. And you know, I don't want to say anybody on the page here is an underdog, uh, but me and him has talked in private and, you know, working and then all of these guys. But me and him has talked in private and, you know, working and all of these guys, you know, Ms. Lawson works every day, Julian works every day, Ray Sean works every day. But these guys, he's got a particular type of job that he has to schedule to be off, he don't have a lot of flexibility. So it's been really, really hard on him with the campaigning, with the debates and things like that. And again, the voters are showing that they want him in office or want him in city council. So again, if we look back at, now we're waiting on the absentees and earlys. So as soon as they come in, again, this is going to determine the winner for sure with the absentees and the early. You know, John, very successful businessman. I think 20 some years plus working for himself. Without a doubt, he would, he would understand budgets and numbers and know how to help move the city forward. But again, looking at these numbers, it's looking like, again, the trend is going to be Ms. Kathy, Julian and Ray Sean at this point. So we're going to take a quick commercial break. We're going to thank some of our sponsors. Again, Autos by Nelson, Martinsville Eye Care Center, Cunningham Tire and also Sarver Properties. Stay tuned when we come back. We're hoping to have the absentees and the early voters and get you some final numbers for city council.
If you're looking to buy or sell, please give us a call at 276-647-7667 or come by our office at Sarver Properties, 5006 Kings Mountain Road, Collinsville, Virginia. We bought the building back last year and we've been remodeling since and we are ready to go now. We've just worked relentlessly with local contractors and my staff and got it done. We set it up as a open concept. So all the agents can come in. They have their own dual monitor systems with the use on their laptops and we're all working together in the same room. Right now, we have eight agents and we're always looking to hire new agents as well. We have listings now and we're ready to go and we can show any house in the MLS system.
Guys, right here is a 2017 Chevrolet Camaro SS from Nelson GR Chevrolet. I'm going to show you what's a fantastic bang for your buck. Guys, to start off in the front, you have these beautiful LED lights with your aggressive Camaro front end like always. We'll keep moving back. My favorite part about this car is the ZL1 wheels wrapped into 75s. Guys, inside we have an aggressive steering wheel heated and ventilated with all your display and setting buttons right here. And this is a 50th anniversary car and you get the emblem of the logo right there. You have your speedometer and tachometer like normal. Then you have a 15 inch display right here that supports Apple and Android. One of the most fun part about this car, it is a six-speed manual car. You have your traction control button right here and your mode you can cycle from tour, sport and ice and snow. Next, we have all the buttons for your AC controls, which are super clicky and super satisfying to press. And you have your AC controls right here. If you don't want to use these, you can use the gigantic knob to control the temperature and the speed of your fans. You have storage in the middle and a glove box right here for any extra things you need to have stored. There's an electric parking brake and to set it, you pull it up. And in my case, I'm parked, you press it down. Then you're off. I know a lot of you are thinking, RSI can't be that fun. This thing almost makes 400 horsepower. With a six-speed manual, it's a super fun driving experience. Got that at the 2017 Camaro RS from Autos by Nelson GR Chevrolet. Let us know down in the comments if you wouldn't mind picking these things up. And if you do, don't forget to hit up GR Chevrolet.
At Autos by Nelson, we value our customers. So we sat them down to get their double take.
Our Nelson gave you a good deal. Prices are good, the interest rates are good.
And they were real nice people to talk to.
They felt like family.
I really enjoy how they treat you.
Come down to here and purchase a car if you need a car. Come down here. Autos by Nelson will treat you right.
Autos by Nelson. Stop by any of our locations today or visit us online.
And they double your warranty.
Martinsville Eye Care Center. We've always believed in the power of community. For years, we've proudly supported local organizations like Boys and Girls Club, United Way, YMCA, Smart Beginnings and the American Red Cross and many others. Our community goes beyond just eye care. It's about caring for our community. Martinsville Eye Care Center, 1099 Brookdale Street, Martinsville, Virginia.
And again, thanks to all of our sponsors. Again, the election coverage is presented by Autos by Nelson and Martinsville Eye Care, Cunningham Tire and Sarver Properties. We did have some updates while we had a quick commercial break and it looks like the trend continues with Ray Sean Gravely upping a little over 200 more points rather at 1414 and Ms. Kathy Lawson at 1328. And there, the third seat would be Julian May, 1098. And again, this is just some updated numbers. They're still counting some of the, let me make sure I'm getting this correctly. They're still absentee and early voting is still being counted. This was an update and we will get some more numbers to you as soon as we can. I last, last but not least, we had, we interviewed John. Did we get to do John? Did I forget John? We did, John. My apologies. We have shown you all five of the candidates as they went through today. And again, all of them totally glad to see this coming to an end so they can get to work for one. Again, we've talked a little bit about some of the issues with housing, infrastructure, things like that that are in the city, the power issue in the city. People, again, just feel like they're paying too much. But then you see people like on city council, for example, John, who has lived in other places along with Julian and Lenita, they're like, wow, they thought things here was actually very affordable. So I've got to say, I feel like we are in a very affordable spot here to live, not only in Martinsville, but in Henry County as well. But if there's some things not addressed very soon with housing, taxes and growing a tax base, we're going to begin to see increase in property taxes, et cetera, in order to keep the city afloat. And then of course, we know what happens. If that doesn't happen, then the city has to take back to a town. And then there we have that gray area. Is the county even wanting to take us? Do we combine all our school systems, which was another big one? You know, the Martinsville City, the residents and the numbers are, they may be at an all time low. Is it still enough infrastructure there or enough folks there to continue having separate entities as far as school? And when you mentioned shutting down the Martinsville High School, the Bulldogs, everybody will rage. Everybody will say, no, no, no. I have to agree with that. That is a awesome school. It's been awesome rivalries throughout all my, my life. And but, but the only thing we've got to realize is if something is not adjusted soon, those are some things that we may be looking at in the future. Five years, 10 years, no one may not know that. But that's the importance of city council is getting these areas, even the gray areas of, hey, can we afford to even continue doing this? Do we need to make adjustments to where we can successfully do this for another 10, 20, 30 years? Or do we need to phase this out in another 10, 20, 30 years? Those are tough decisions, but that's why you get voted into city council. That's why you have to make those type of decisions. And again, voters, you're the ones voting these folks in. And let's hope they can get in there and make some adjustments to the city. And we can see this city. Again, back to what we've always said, we live, work and we play here and we want to see the city of Martinsville successful. And the only way that's going to, is everybody's going to have to get together. We're going to have to come together and work as a team, whether it be county, whether it be city, we're all going to come together. And I really liked the last little meeting I went to right at the Carolina line where you see Crown and Press Glass. Lot of construction work, a lot of dirt hauling taking place there. Again, a great partnership with the city and the county. You know, the city allowing the county to use some of their numbers to be able to move forward with some projects, allow the city to get some skin in the game, which I think is very important. Again, that's again, showing the county, hey, we're here to help, to work together. Let's make this work. And, and I believe that it will. But we've got, again, we've got to build, we got to, one, protect the infrastructure because if the infrastructure ever collapses, we're going to be in some major trouble. I also know that even in the court systems has been moved around because of leaking water. Those are things that, that I think and feel should have been addressed 10, 15 years ago. Not wait till we have a problem. But unfortunately, this is where we are. We've waited till now we have a huge problem. And now to fix some of the infrastructure, we don't need a couple of hundred thousand dollars. We need 30, 40, 50 million dollars to move forward. You know, even in our power grid, you know, to just begin that journey is millions and millions of dollars. And that is where the city council has got to begin to make plans and make adjustments that will help us move into the future. So again, we're just waiting on the absentees and still don't think they have came in yet. We're still looking at 414 for Mr. Gravely and 1328 for Ms. Lawson and Mr. May at 1098. So again, looks like those three seats are trending to kind of be set in place. Looks like Ms. Kathy Lawson will continue being seated at the city council and possibly two new faces will be seeing on city council as well. Early voters will be in in five minutes is what we just were told. And we're going to take an absentee in five minutes. So we're going to take a quick commercial break. When we come back, we're going to be giving you the early voters and the absentees when we come back.
Nelson Towing and Recovery has been serving Martinsville, Henry County and the surrounding areas for 45 years. We have a talented, friendly staff with almost 100 years of combined experience. All of our drivers are certified and experienced in just about any situation. Our fleet of tow trucks contains a variety of modern vehicles that will meet every possible need. We also provide roadside assistance to help you out in case you have a flat tire or run out of fuel. Nelson Towing and Recovery, 888-257-8866.
Martinsville Eye Care Center. We've always believed in the power of community. For years, we've proudly supported local organizations like Boys and Girls Club, United Way, YMCA, Smart Beginnings and the American Red Cross and many others. Our community goes beyond just eye care. It's about caring for our community. Martinsville Eye Care Center, 1099 Brookdale Street, Martinsville, Virginia.
If you're looking to buy or sell, please give us a call at 276-647-7667 or come by our office at Sarver Properties, 5006 Kings Mountain Road, Collinsville, Virginia. We bought the building back last year and we've been remodeling since and we are ready to go now. We've just worked relentlessly with local contractors and my staff and got it done. We set it up as a open concept. So all the agents can come in. They have their own dual monitor systems with the use on their laptops and we're all working together in the same room. Right now, we have eight agents and we're always looking to hire new agents as well. We have listings now and we're ready to go and we can show any house in the MLS system.
It's that time again. Mark your calendar for the 32nd Annual Big Bird Toy Run. It's going to be November the 9th. Registration from 10 to 12:30, kickstands up at 1. 20 a rider, 25 for doubles. Our starting point this year, thanks to our new sponsor, is Thunder Road Harley-Davidson. 32nd Annual Big Bird Toy Run in memory of Rick Big Bird Hogan. And we'll take a quick little look before we go back. Again, we've been, we're seeing a trend with Gravely and also with Ms. Lawson and May, as it looks like they will be the three seated in city council. We do have absentees coming up in the final. But we'll take a quick look at Virginia right now for the presidency. It looks like the Democratic Party, Harris, is up 53.38%. And again, you can see all this, if, could be a little confusing when you look, you see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven write-ins. You could have a write-in running for president. That is the biggest presidential ballot I have ever seen in my history of voting. So you've got the libertarians, independents, et cetera. Never seen all of that on a ballot in my time of voting. Again, we'll scroll down just quickly. Tim Kane is also up 55.37. And then in the House of Representatives, first district, we're seeing Whitman, 62%. And also in the second district, we're also seeing Gene there with 55.46%. And then we're going to have the third district, looks like Scott here, Robert Scott at 70.43. We got some, got some more numbers. Let's take a quick look at them. Let me pull my paper back up. And what'd you know, I've lost my spot, but that's okay. We'll find it again. Still the same? Okay, yeah, give me just a second to get my computer straightened back out. I was on a different page. It's this, now this is not the final, but you can see, again, it looks like Ms. Kathy Lawson now has taken the lead, 2585. Ray Sean Gravely at 2269, Julian May at 2108 and John Wilson III at 1723 and Lenita Hurlem at 1378. Again, this is not the final. Looks like the, the mail-in has just come in. So we're going to be getting the mail-in and then that will be our final tally, which again, I think we all can see the three that are, that are headed in to the city council. Again, it looks like Ms. Kathy Lawson, you will be headed back in as you will pull another term. And Mr. Julian May and Ray Sean Gravely, looks like you two gentlemen will be fresh eyes, so to speak, in the city council. And I know the three of you have got your job laid out for you, but I believe you're going to do a great job and the viewers are definitely depending on you and hoping that you get in there and do a wonderful job. Again, we talked about all the things that the city has dealt with and struggled with in the past. And again, I believe we've got to build a stronger tax base in the city to where we don't have to lean back on the county and, and worry about shutting down schools. We've got to begin to, let's just be honest, to stay in business, in any kind of business, it's just simple. You have to make money. If you can't make money, then you can't, you can't sustain the cost of being a business. So that has been some, a lot of if's and talks about the city has made some bad deals, possibly very true. No one will ever know that gray area, but now it's time to move forward. So again, whether it be the electrical, whether it be whatever, the infrastructure of the pipes and the sewer, all of those things, we still have to begin to put together a strategic plan to move the city forward in the future. city forward in the future. So we'll get this information again back on your screen. Again, Ms. Kathy Lawson with 2585, which is putting her in seat number one at the current Ray Sean Gravely at 2269. Julian May at 2108. John Wilson III at 1723 and Lenita Hurlem at 1378. Now, we just was told that there was another update. And man, what a jump there for John Wilson, but I don't think it's going to be enough. Again, Ms. Kathy Lawson, 2887, a really good jump for her. 2488 for Julian May. And again, Ray Sean Gravely at 2480. John Wilson still with 2095 and Lenita Hurlem at 1613. So again, we're again still seeing, I called it back precinct five. We begin to see the trend after three precincts had come in. We begin to see the trend with these three candidates. But I also knew those trends change from precinct to precinct because you could be in my hometown and you get more, you get more votes, kind of the hometown boy there. And you've seen each one of these candidates as they hit that precinct, the one they were the strongest in. So again, those, that was the last update we have gotten. And we're going to take a quick commercial break because we're wrapping things up. We're getting toward the end. Again, I'm already pretty much telling you the three that I believe that's already there. Ms. Kathy Lawson, also Ms. Julian May and Ray Sean Gravely. But we're going to take a quick break and we're going to see the final results when we come back.
Guys, this is the 2024 Mach E GT and I'm going to show you lots better than a Tesla. To start off guys, we have the super aggressive hood, these beautiful LED lights. My favorite part about it is a light up on it. We have active arrow right here. We have active vents right here to cool off your brakes. When we come around to the side, we have these beautiful 20 inch wheels wrapped in Continental. Then right behind it are these gigantic Brembo brakes and it has Magneride. To get in, all you have to do is press this button or you can leave everything inside and use this touchscreen or you can use the app on your phone. Guys, inside we have a huge display monitor that supports Apple CarPlay and Android Auto. Move down, we have storage space right here. It is a wireless car charger right here. We have storage right here, right here. And then you have your 15 inch display and monitor right here. You have a giant speaker that goes from dash to dash all the way across. You get almost 300 miles on a full charge and with 460 horsepower, this takes pretty quick. With all of that guys, that is the Ford Mach E GT. Let us know down in the comments if you will buy one of these things. And if you do, you can always swing by Nelson Automotive Ford dealership and pick you up one of these things today. Guys, let us know what cars you want to see next.
Martinsville Eye Care Center. We've always believed in the power of community. For years, we've proudly supported local organizations like Boys and Girls Club, United Way, YMCA, Smart Beginnings and the American Red Cross and many others. Our community goes beyond just eye care. It's about caring for our community. Martinsville Eye Care Center, 1099 Brookdale Street, Martinsville, Virginia.
If you're looking to buy or sell, please give us a call at two seven six six four seven seven six six seven, or come by our office at Sarver Properties, 5006 Kings Mountain Road, Collinsville, Virginia. We bought the building back last year and we've been remodeling since and we are ready to go now. We've just worked relentlessly with local contractors and my staff and got it done. We set it up as a open concept so all the agents can come in. They have their own dual monitor systems with the use on their laptops and that way we're all working together in the same room. Right now we have eight agents and we're always looking to hire new agents as well. We have listings now when we're ready to go and we can show any house in the MLS system.
It's that time again. Mark your calendar for the 32nd Annual Big Bird Toy Run. Going to be November the 9th. Registration from 10 to 12:30. Kickstands up at 1:00. Twenty a rider, 25 for doubles. Our starting point this year, thanks to our new sponsor, is Thunder Road Harley-Davidson. 32nd Annual Big Bird Toy Run in memory of Rick Big Bird Hogan. And folks, our final numbers are in, which we had already gotten the totals. It is official now that Ms. Kathy Lawson has remained seated as the city councilwoman at 2,887 votes. And now we're seeing Mr. Julian May, 2,488 votes will be taking chair two and chair three will be Ray Sean Gravely with 2,480 votes. Again, John Wilson rounded off with 2,095 votes and Ms. Hurlem with 1,613 votes. So folks, that's going to wrap up our coverage here for the city election. Again, I'm sure you can stay tuned to some of the major networks to follow some of the presidential election. We have kind of opted out because I know that's going to be probably way on up in the next week if we're lucky to figure out that. Hopefully all that will go smooth tonight and we can get our numbers accurately as you got them tonight from BTW 21. So again, big thank you to Wayne Harold, giving us our numbers and also our graphic designer and our technician tonight, Ms. Grace Webster for production and also for our sponsors, Autos by Nelson. This again was presented by Autos by Nelson, Martinsville Eye Care Center, Cunningham Tire and Sarver Property. So again, congratulations to Ms. Lawson, Mr. May and Mr. Gravely for earning the seats by the elected vote of the citizens. You've got some big shoes to fill. Now tomorrow, get in there and get to work. Thanks for tuning in and again, thank you for voting and getting out there because your vote does matter. Again, I'm Chad Hall. Thank you for tuning in and I pray everybody have a blessed evening and I want you to stay tuned because there's more great local programming coming up next.
Get ready for big savings at Cunningham Tire. Now through December